Okay, we'll open the meeting for Monday, June 13th. Change the motion to accept the agenda as may be amended.
So moved, um, how about we... Do we have a board of liquor control?
No, there's no liquor tonight.
Okay, so let's, um, take that out of there, since we don't have that. Let me just... Okay, um, so, so moved.
Okay, in favor of the agenda as amended by eliminating that, please say aye.
Aye.
And we'll start with minutes, May 25th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 25th. I didn't see anything on it yet.
I, no. I didn't have anything either. In favor of May 25th, minutes as presented, please say aye.
Um, June 1st, we'll have to wait for Chris.
And June 2nd.
Yep.
June 2nd, we'll have to wait for Chris to come in.
Okay. Take those for now.
Right. So, select board member concerns. I'm gonna say that Cory, our line scraping, line striping guy, had a bad injury to his back, but he's back. And, uh, he has us scheduled for Wednesday, July...
Thirteen?
No, it's the beginning, July 6th.
Six, okay.
July 6th.
The week before our meeting.
Yeah, so July 6th, he'll be in, he'll do all the, that's the crosswalks, the stop signs.
And the parking lots.
And the parking lots, and if we wanna get him to, um...
Is he doing roads?
He's not doing roads, and, uh, but I told him, let's have a conversation. He's actually looking at getting a machine, so, when he's coming in. Um, he's gonna go up and redo the school for the school.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I don't know if we want him to... What do we gotta do at the rec department to fix that mess up?
You're talking about the pool?
Yeah.
We have to re- just re-striping their angles, their angle spaces.
They almost need to black them out, and then redo it.
But almost like black type, like...
Well, what they did is they originally had put like, you know, that tennis court?
They're in select man's concern, so...
The tennis court coatings they have, that's how they did it.
Yeah.
And then we had it, then we did do the treatment, but it didn't stay.
So you have going, this is at the pool area, you have the stripings, one set of stripings going like this, and then another set going like this.
Right.
So if I put another set in there, is it gonna be, makes sense?
I'll have to go back and look, I haven't looked at it.
Take a look, I think you might have to have it skim coated.
Yeah, we'll probably have to reseal it.
Get it out.
Okay, and I'm saying that Cory, the line striping guy?
Yeah.
He had a hernia disc or whatever.
Okay.
He'll be in on Wednesday, July 5th or 6th, or whatever it is.
Okay.
He'll do that out, and then he's also gonna be talking to me. He might be buying a machine to actually do full roads.
Does he need an investor?
He might.
Well, the thing is, is there's such a shortage.
I know. Yeah.
Great business to get in.
Yeah.
They just say those machines are a pain in the neck.
He's like, he had a couple...
I'm sure.
He had a couple of, um, food stores that, you know, big food shopping, that he had to get done. He says, "And I was still on crutches, Jim, but what I was doing was I was getting out of my truck, and then I would get the crutches off to the side, and then he'd use the machine as his..."
To hold it up.
Yeah, so he's got somebody else working on it. But that's my only input, select man's concern right now, just to let you guys know what's going on with that.
I have a question regarding the ongoing issue on River Road. Should we get in touch with Jim Harrison?
You mean the Beaver thing?
Because different people have said, "We need to go over the head of..." And I came to this after I read the response that you got about it has to be taken down manually, and don't take the debris away from the site, so that it can be reintroduced.
Yeah.
Uh, there's no danger of...
Don't take it away? Yeah, it was like, "Do not take it away." They wanted to be able to put it back, and 20 minutes, it's back.
And it also was...
So why would you not take it away? I would take it away.
No, that's what, that's what he's asking for, not to remove it, but to lower it.
Yeah.
And take the stuff away, so that it can't be just immediately put right back in.
They want the stuff left and, on the side of the shore.
Yeah.
And I say shore, because it is a lake. But, but I, when I read that thing?
I know.
I don't think it's, they're not saying to get it, they want the trout and everything. So I think we need to get someone in, I think we have to go at that, I think the area looks great. I kinda like it, but on the other hand, um, it's filling, some of our culverts are already filled.
Seven of them.
Okay, are filled, and we need to get, we need to get them, so that they're working properly.
And, you know, they talk about wildlife habitat, how many birds have lost their habitat because the water's too high now?
Kip said that that's actually a very, uh, popular birding area, and there's like 120 species in it. They're, it's actually being reduced because of the...
Yeah.
Sure is.
So, I think, I think, I think maybe this is one of those things that we don't know what we're saying correctly, and maybe Jim Harrison's not gonna know what to say correctly, but...
He might point us at that person.
But he might point us, but then also that other group that came in and did the, the geese or whatever.
The USDA.
Yeah, let's, let's get ahold of them, and show them what they gave us, and let them start talking.
Yeah, the issue for them was, is their response was, is state-owned land at that location.
Right, but what I'm getting at is, is that if we can get them to work with that plan, and maybe see, and go from there. But also, they talked about trapping or whatever, and then if you got someone, you could get year-round trapping, I believe in that report that they wrote up. Those are the guys that are gonna be doing it.
Yeah, no, they would, they would be the best to do the trapping and manage the process.
At least we can start getting that going.
We gotta get the dam.
Yeah.
And they, I mean, you know, at some point, we should ask the state if we can file for, you know, some funding to help us when our roads start deteriorating.
Culverts being underwater is not good.
He actually, the guy who sent the report and actually said, "I drove down River Road and didn't see any danger of flooding." But seven of the culverts are blocked on the up, and so the water on the uphill side can only go across the road. It can't go through the culverts.
Yeah, but you can't see that.
Which means you didn't look very well.
I think we need to...
We also couldn't see the culverts, because they were covered.
They were covered in water.
I think we need to get Tom, and I forget the other person's name.
At some point, it's just gonna road the road bed, too.
Yeah, so, so let's find a different attack on that.
Yep.
Do you have any concerns?
No.
Okay. Uh, for everybody that's tuned in, do you have something you want to bring up that is not already on the agenda? Can you let us know, raise your hand, do something, unmute yourself?
Did we lose an addie?
I think it changed to Katie.
Oh, okay.
Katie.
Okay. Uh, not seeing anyone right now, so, we don't have liquor control. So, Whit is on, and we're up to cruiser update.
Well, basically, I just put that on there for an update, and Whit and I have been talking. Um, the cruisers are ordered, and they're supposed to be in onsite less than, in around 30 days.
Okay.
At this point, they said in the next month, we'll have them. And I don't know if Whit, if you've heard anything in addition to that, but that's where we are today.
Yeah, he called me today, spoke with him, he just wanted to confirm the, uh, was going to the paint shop. They wanna confirm the paint scheme, so it's going to the paint shop, uh, prior this week, he said.
Okay, great.
Well, that's good, because that's usually the last thing to get fixed. And there, are, are they coming in equipped for EMT at that point? Or is that something?
No, we, we will get the EMT rescue bags on our own.
Okay, and then, um, how's it, since we have you here, and it's talking about police cruisers, we ordered two, we're keeping one?
Yes.
And we have two officers, how's that going, Whit? The third?
Really well, actually, we got a, uh, potential, um, we have an applicant who could be a potential hire, so he, um, he's starting his background, actually, this week.
Okay.
Great, I would just comment, if I could, with, um...
Yes.
The presence that the police had up at the elementary school, um, with all the events it took on, place in the country, I think it was a great move.
Great, thank you.
And it was, uh, well noticed, I appreciate it.
Excellent, thank you for pressing that on.
Okay. You wanna lead us into the search committee?
Yeah, the search committee, um, the, the position for the fire chief has been posted. Um, we, it'll be posted for 30 days. What I'm going to be doing is sending out a, a mail chimp and a request for anybody who wants to be on the search committee. We'll list, you know, the, the members, we want a one select board member, one member of the public, one member, uh, of the fire department, and one member, and staff, um, as part of that committee. And what I'm gonna be asking for is that we get any, any interest, um, to the select board prior to July 1st, so that then on June, July 11th, which is the, that meeting after that, we will set the committee, and then be starting probably the middle of July with interviews.
So this will be like appointing somebody to the rec, or whatever?
Basically.
It comes to the board, the board makes the decision.
We'll make, we'll appoint the, the members of the committee.
Okay.
And I just have a organizational question. Would someone from CASR be considered fire department?
Um, I mean, they, there's another, and that is something...
They still fall under the same umbrella.
Yeah, and I think we, including a CASR member would be, would be good, actually, the person who's managing.
I asked that question that night.
Yeah, and...
And, and I was told with, with, I think Debbie was here, and, um...
Tom, not Tom.
No, um, Gary was here, and he suggested just Tom Rockin, that was it.
Yeah.
And I, I specifically...
And I have talked to Tom, and he is interested.
I specifically asked the question of who, so, but I mean, anyone else from the fire department can put their names in, or CASR, but I don't think they would be a member of that, or, because Gary specifically said only one person from.
Okay.
So if there's people from CASR, and, or there are other people in the fire department, there are actually citizens, too, that I would expect them to come in underneath that.
Right.
You don't wanna have this like it's too, like saying we're taking this money from the fire department and CASR.
No, I mean, basically, it's open to the, we will have a select board member, there will be at least a member of the fire department, and there will be staff, and we'll go from there after that, based on...
Marty actually asked me if someone from CASR could...
Yeah.
And some of it might be, who, how many people do we get that show interest?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, once you put it out there, I think we can gauge, you know, the candidates as such, that are interested.
Because we wanna pick a, the, the variety of backgrounds, so...
Okay, so in by the first...
You had a July? Yes, okay.
Did you receive my...
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Your, your, your letter, your request is in.
Okay, and my, my qualifications?
Yep, it's all there.
All right.
So I happened to see the ad in the paper that's coming out this week, I think. And, and the only one thing I didn't see in there was, I, I don't think I saw a requirement that, um, a physical examination or whatever, and that's most fire departments, when you're a paid fire department, you have to, there's a physical.
I can update that. I did miss that. Okay.
Probably, I mean, the Valentine, I think, tomorrow, tomorrow is the deadline.
I'll send their, I'll send their, yeah, man.
Yeah.
Okay.
Short-term rental, um, we're moving along. We're having many conversations with people in town of clean slate, my new two worst words I don't like. Um, the state of Vermont put out a letter, and I've shared it with Chet and Kevin Brown, basically saying that they are so overloaded that they are not giving any exemptions out at this point anymore, including clean slate, but then I have some lawyers telling me that they never gave out clean slate. And I was like, I'm just telling you what I got here, and, uh, my conversation around 5:15, 5:30 this afternoon, um, with Kevin Brown and Chet listening in, and Lisa was that we will get a, um, an opinion letter from our town attorney, but, um, move forward with that. The town is not, I, I'm not accepting, um, I have no authority to give clean slate to anybody's buildings. And it's not my issue if the state of Vermont doesn't wanna enforce their... And we fall back behind, that clean slate says 2007, unless the town had a regulation in place, and we had regulation in place at 1975.
Built before that.
And I'm pulling, I'm pulling up things that, you know, are telling me that it's clearly a two-bedroom, or a three-bedroom, or whatever, and, um, clean slate did not wipe out what the town permitted during those years of 1975 to 2007.
Our regulations are always tougher.
Yeah.
Than...
And actually, ours were done under the health regulations, which is why they're exempt from clean slate.
Yeah, and that's, so, so I'm waiting for the letter, the opinion letter. I mean, people are signing up, and, um, still, even though it's, the new year starts in November, but I guess some people are getting ready for rent for the summertime, so, it's moving along.
That's it?
That's it on there, I mean...
All that work you do, and that's, you summarize it in one sentence?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Tired of talking about it.
Speed engineering?
Yeah, I included in your packets, and I sent you emails, uh, with, when we talked about modifying some speed limits on, on a couple of roads in our traffic ordinance.
Right.
And we're required to do a speed limit study, um, and Daryl, our, our planner, has done these before. He worked in traffic engineering before, and provided the documents that the state requires, and gives us the background for what we're trying to do. The one thing to keep in mind, um, when you look at the average speeds, the highest speed, and things of that nature, these studies are based on the 85th percentile, so the people who are the outliers driving above, really above, are not counted, it's in the 85th percentile, talking about average speeds. Um, the desire, from a conversation perspective, was three things. The speed limit on Killington Road, switching to 30. Um, East Mountain Road was identified because it has two different speed limits on it. It's 25 miles an hour for section 35 for another, um, and the same thing on River Road. And I think the goal was to get those to be consistent speeds. Um, and we used the same thing we did with Killington Road on East Mountain Road, is the assumption is gonna be 30. Um, from a draft perspective, I don't have the River Road one yet, uh, but this was just to give you a heads-up as to where we are. These are the, the initial drafts for, for your comment and opinion, um, and we would basically be going 30, top to bottom on East Mountain Road, and 30, top to bottom on Killington Road.
So, at 85th percentile, we're doing 47 miles an hour between Whiffle Tree and Hyrage?
Make sure I'm looking at the right one.
That's where I work.
I know, I'm just asking you.
I don't...
Well, I think what you guys are missing in here is I saw something else, and I thought I saw on one of the things, am I wrong in seeing highest speed was 77 miles an hour?
I don't think that was the case in the 77, somewhere in there, I think it existed.
No, it was on East Mountain Road.
Okay.
I don't, so that's what I'm like looking at here.
Well, he, he...
He brought this down to the 85th percentile.
Yeah, which is what's required.
Right, but there was...
This doesn't talk about the screen, yes.
And Killington Road?
Yeah.
There was an 80 mile an hour.
Yes.
And that was just over a five-day period.
Correct.
But...
So the one thing that, that we are...
Yeah, one motorcycle, or, you know?
Yeah, no, it was just, yeah, it could be just one, but... I'm sure the 77 on East Mountain Road was, you probably felt like you could open it up a little bit more on Killington.
I'm just shocked at this, 85th percentile, 47, that's pretty, that's quick.
That's moving. So I think the, the key is going to be, one of the things that, and Whit and I were talking about it, and we have a couple of proposals, is getting the, the better speed, uh, electronic signs, and trying to get, you know, at least that type of, that type of information out there, so people know, and are, are being, that they're being watched. And the other question we've had is, uh, we wanna do more, and I don't even wanna necessarily use the word enforcement initially. I mean, I, we, we actually talked about trying to get a day where maybe we could invite the state police, and we could pull a lot of people over, but just give warnings one time, and, and do that on Schoolhouse Road, and Killington Road, and things like that.
I don't think they're gonna get, I don't think, I think what we need to do is market the fact that the road is lowering to 30.
Well, we need to do that, and we, but I also think that we need to, and we have to have more of a presence on the road, as far as, you know...
I can see a presence, but...
Yeah.
Didn't we, I don't, I don't...
Bring in the state police.
This goes back about three or four weeks ago. Did we invite the unmarked cars to be at the bottom of the pass, right in front of like the deli and the post office?
No, it's not our road.
They must've, they must've pulled over 30 cars.
I think that was a, that was for the holiday weekend.
It was right before the holiday week.
Yeah.
That was highway safety?
And they were in unmarked cars?
Yeah.
Until the lights came on.
Oh, Whit, they don't necessarily always give out tickets, they are also giving out warnings at a certain speed limit, correct?
Yeah, government's highway safety, that's, it was government's highway safety program, we participated in as well. It's, a lot of departments get the grants, and there's different programs throughout the year, some's DOI, clicker ticket, um, cellphone stuff, and that's what that was. Uh, they, a lot of times, depending what the speed is, you know, they're getting tickets, but also, they're, they're doing warnings as well.
Right, so, so if somebody's doing eight or nine miles an hour over, whatever, and has a light out, they might pull them over and say, "By the way, you were doing," but they're not gonna necessarily give them that ticket or whatever. Um, I don't, I, I don't believe in, like, bringing in more presence and saying, "Let's just give them warnings." There's a certain percentage, when you're over a certain miles per hour...
Yeah, they have to get a ticket.
You know, they have to get a ticket. I mean, if somebody's doing 50 miles an hour in a 35, that's 15 miles an hour over the speed limit.
And they're being passed on the way down the access road.
Yeah.
I just think we're better off going out with a marketing campaign, you know?
Well, that's the start, yeah.
It's a start, and then, and then at some point, you will get to enforcement, but I think we're better off keeping it a little local, for the start.
Yeah, and hopefully we'll have more staff coming on board here, and it's gonna, just some of these cases we're taking, take us off the road, and just, I think, three days of paperwork, so it's good for them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the River Road, some people asked me a question on, I mean, and I think it was confusion on their part or whatever, but we were saying, "Get it all the same," and the joke was, is that in front of the recreation department in the library, it's 25, and then in the gravel, it goes to 35. We were going to 25 throughout the whole road.
Yes.
Okay, so somebody had it mixed up.
Yeah, but they felt it wasn't as dense once you went past the town office, that's why it was...
No, they were thinking we were gonna raise the 25 in front of the town.
No, that's us now, but I mean, when they put it up years ago, they felt, well, that's where it gets not as busy.
But also, actually, the, the state kinda discourages going below 35 on the gravel roads, because that's like the standard speed limit for all gravel roads. The state default speed limit is that, but when you show the information, you'll, we will be able to make that change.
So, but I just wanna make sure that River Road is 25 throughout the whole...
Consistent, yeah.
Consistent, not going to 35 in front of our rec department.
No, we're not doing that. No, 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 no.
All right, so what do we do with this, I mean...
I mean, this, for the time being, until I get you all of them, basically, once the select board accepts these, and we save the 30 mile an hour, we then use this as the backup for the update of the, uh, the ordinance.
Right.
So I, we still have the River Road to come in, and then we can update.
So when are we projecting that we're gonna finalize this and go?
July.
July, and then after, so, starting August 1st, what we're gonna look at?
These would be the news, once we adopt the ordinance, and the, and the appeal period, um, which is either 30 or 40 days, then it becomes operation. It's probably like beginning of September.
Okay, have you ordered signs yet?
No.
We should probably do that.
Yeah, well, we haven't had, they've, they've been doing okay again this summer.
We know how everything else goes.
I know, so we'll get them ordered.
I don't wanna, see an ordinance in place, and then no signs to back it up.
Right, I got it.
Okay.
Order signs.
Yeah, um, on the town side, um, things are looking, I think, pretty, real good. Um, and just, the, we've basically, I'd like to set a record for the rooms, meals, and alcohol tax this year. We were 595,000 actual, we had budgeted 410, um, and basically, the 286 that we got for the first quarter of this year is the highest by $53,000 that we've had historically, so, um, that tells us, you know, what's been going on, the amount of people that are here, um, and the amount of activity has been good throughout the year, um, so that was a big plus. Um, we don't have anything exceptional out there on the expense side, it all is tracking pretty close to budget. Uh, we're gonna be, you know, probably within dollars of where we plan to be right now. We have 444,000 to the good, um, and it will go through this month, and it'll probably be closer to 150 or two, mostly because of the options tax. Um, to answer the board's questions, I will have, hopefully, a final report in July, um, on the electricity. Um, there's been, there's some issues with when they changed their software about a year and a half ago, and we noticed it, actually, before the last meeting, where the original loan for the, the lights on Killington Road, um, was delayed two years, and then they started putting it in, you know, as a per fixture basis, but I think the way it looks is that they were charging us as if it was fixture and electricity, like an ownership thing, like we do with the streetlights. So, there's an allocation issue that's related to that, um, and our streetlight prices have gone up per fixture significantly. Um, so, we are looking at that, and I will give you a full report on that. And on the telephone side, and just so everyone knows, from an, from a, because it's a PPA on the electricity, um, the two PPAs we have, we're paying 10, 10% less than the rate that GMP charges for all the electricity we generate. And we are generating almost all of it at this time of year. So we're not paying more for that, it's, it's the issues related to the loan, which is a $5,000 or $6,000 a year, and also, um, these fixture prices where I think we were being potentially double charged, and we're gonna work that out and get that back to you as we talk to GMP.
So how long do we think we were double charged on the fixtures?
Possibly two years. The, the issue that exists is a couple of years old, and it just didn't pick it up. Actually, we picked it up two months ago, when they, all of a sudden, they broke the loan back out again, and then we were still seeing the bill, and it's like, it, none of it made any sense. So we're trying to figure out what happened there, and we'll go from there and get that organized, and then I'll be able to give you a full report.
Okay, and then on the phone?
The phone, they, evidently, when we talked, told them how many phones had to be turned off, we're getting charged for phone numbers we don't use, um, so, I don't know how that got back in here. We don't look at, I don't see those every month, so we're going to be, I'm going to be going back to VTEL, and having that conversation with them, and getting that removed.
And this comes back to my question, because we did have warrants to be signed the other day on Friday, and when I was sitting there, I was like, "Why am I signing a warrant for a bill to be paid to VTEL, when we switched to New Horizons?"
Well, we still will have VTEL expense, because we kept a few of the numbers, and we're also getting some, uh, some of the internet from them, so there will always be a VTEL bill, but not at the price that we were charged.
Paying $1,385 to VTEL for one.
Right, which is not correct, and now I gotta go back and deal with that.
But I, I don't get why, because that day that the phones and the, and the internet went out, and I called New Horizons, they looked up, and they said that they're getting it from Comcast. I don't understand why we're paying VTEL a penny, we should've been getting rid of that.
Comcast provides the internet for, well, we'd have to change all the phone numbers, which we didn't wanna do in the beginning.
No, they'll port them in.
Yeah, no, they will not port them.
They ported them for us.
They, well, they told us they would not allow us to port them, and we were told that VTEL is one of the, one of the companies, it's not required to...
So we're paying them $1,300 on top of our bill?
Yes, that's the problem.
Well, why did we ever switch?
But then it's not worth the switch.
Well, no, we're not gonna be paying that, it should be more like $150 or $200, it should not be that.
You shouldn't, they should, you should be allowed, you don't, you own your phone number.
Okay.
And you have the right to port it, okay?
I was told they have an exemption from the federal rules on that, so I will, I'll double check it.
I did it on all my properties.
Okay, well, then we will, that's why we'll revisit it.
I don't know that part there, I'm just saying, $1,300 is $15,600 a year.
Correct.
And I don't know how we can be saying we're saving any money if...
We're not right now, and I will fix the issue.
How long does that go back, that, when did we switch over?
About a year, a little over a year ago.
So...
So we will address that.
I mean, we just have to watch.
Yes.
The billing, that's the, that is one of the reasons, too, to have the checks being, when we made that decision, to have the checks go through.
Well, when I, when I did that, that was, the bill just came back to my desk because of the changes, and that's when I noticed it, and I was like, "Well, I got a copy of it," so I could call them, and, and I haven't had that argument yet. On the, on the, uh, treasures report, right now, we're in an okay place. We have about $700,000, um, available for the town to use outside of restricted funds. Um, so we're still good for this month, and in December, and in July, we'll see about a million dollars' worth of revenue, so we don't have to do any borrowing. worth of revenue, so we don't have to do any borrowing, and it also is to keep in mind that this balance also reflects monies that we have spent on special projects and things of that nature that will be recouped through the, the process with the current expense notes, and then ultimately hopefully a bond.
What money is it that comes up to us in July?
Tax money, actually, we get about a million dollars between the second half of July, people paying their bills.
And you also get.
Paying their bills for the up.
We get, the bill goes out on July fifteenth.
Oh, it does, okay.
We get, we get about a million dollars in that two weeks, on average.
Some of the escrow companies start paying.
Yeah, we start getting a couple of the biggies right away, soon as they hit them, they, because when we get the escrow monies, they're, they're electronic transfers.
Gotcha.
So it just kinda hits. So from that, we, so on a cash basis, especially given that we've spent a couple hundred thousand dollars on other projects, we're in a good place financially.
Great.
And you, and then now finally, because it's the end of the year, the actual taxes are reflected on the municipal tax side because we have the state monies out, that money was paid on May thirtieth or thirty-first, so the five point two million that we paid to the state.
So this is, you know, we have this on for now, time finance, town financials, and normally we'd make a motion to accept in May, so I'm being told that we, the phone and the electric has to be corrected.
Well, what I'm, I'm saying, it will have a year-end one, and that will all be corrected on that, which will be the one at June thirtieth. This is, those two items, I wanna find out where we are so I can give you a report on where it is, and we will let you know if we're getting any of it back or if it stays the way it is. So in July, we will be doing the June financials, which will be year-end.
So that, what you just said is, you're gonna go to them and you're gonna make your points, but if they argue with us, then it's gonna stay the way it is, or we're gonna get whatever back. But I just don't know why.
You don't, these don't have to be, you don't have to vote on this.
I know, I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned of, so they come back and say, well, you forgot to, who forgot to get the lines off? What lines are there that, that warrant? And, and even the internet part, I mean, are we getting internet from VTEL?
Yes.
For, for where?
The Comcast doesn't provide the main internet, it provides the internet for the phones. Like, we have, there's, they, they use a very low-grade internet speed for just running the phone system, so.
Why do we have two providers?
But this is, so I'm gonna get back to the day that I was in the office and the internet went out, and, and the phone went out. The only person that came was Comcast.
Right.
And when he finally came back at like four o'clock in the afternoon, he had the internet back up and the phone back up.
Well, that's what I, when I saw the bills this, this past week, I realized all that's on there, and I'm gonna be addressing that this week, so.
I, I just think that we have one or the other, or maybe we have to do another analysis of which.
If I can get, if we can get, if I can get the phone numbers ported, I could just shut VTEL off, and that's where it'll be.
Maybe VTEL's the better service.
Not from a phone perspective, not from the, the voice-over IP service, we had them give us information on that, and they were not competitive.
But.
So.
But weren't competitive with what? They're getting thirteen hundred dollars a month from us right now.
Well, they're not going to be getting it later this week.
But I didn't hear that, that's the part that I'm lost on, we're gonna go back to them, we're gonna make our case, and if they say no.
I'm just gonna shut them off.
But if you can just shut them off, then we should have shut them off a year and a half ago.
First of all, all but a couple of them were supposed to be shut off.
Okay.
So the issue is, we're talking a couple hundred dollars a month versus the other, that I would have expected to stay. Now that I saw this, I will address that, and I'm gonna shut off everything I can, and if I can get the numbers ported, I'll shut the whole thing off.
But I believe Comcast is our internet service, and when I listen to people in that office, no one is happy with the internet service. Maybe it's because we have two competing against each other, I don't know.
Well, the internet service in this building is veto.
Okay.
Why?
Because we couldn't get Comcast here.
Wouldn't we be better off just taking this whole thing and saying, we want you to bid, give us a bid to be our communications company?
Right.
Give us a price.
Right, and that's where.
I don't understand, we have VTEL here, we don't have VTEL, we got, well, we have VTEL in the building, but we got their phone numbers.
Well, some of the other issues that we had, that were, we actually have slowly been eliminating.
Does it seem a little confusing to you?
Huh?
Does it seem a little confusing to you?
Yes and no, I mean.
Well, obviously it's been confusing, but you paid thirteen hundred dollars a month for a year on it.
The other issue we had prior to, we're now upgrading all of our fire alarm systems, we had, the, the way the code was, you had to have copper lines for your fire alarm, both primary and secondary, okay? We are now changing that, they're going, they've now changed that rule, we've updated two or three of the panels, this one's good, town hall's now good, I think I got library and the town garage to do that I can eliminate the copper wires, so there's some things that we had to maintain, so.
I was just, every time I hear something, I, I've got a different question, because I'm asking the question, why do we have a thirteen hundred and eighty-five dollar bill from VTEL, because I thought the town was completely onto New Horizons.
We were except, no, no.
But I'm told that this building is on VTEL, so how much of the thirteen hundred and eighty-five dollars is for this building?
That's what I gotta find, that's, but I haven't had a chance, I said, this just, I saw this the other day, so I will, I will have it to you shortly.
Because I, I think, I think it's time that we price it out to see who total package.
Got it.
And let them all come in and do whatever, because VTEL does do River Road.
Yes.
And they do here, so.
Okay, I will have that to you.
So, I'll make a motion to accept the treasures report for May as presented.
It looks like David might not be on anymore. Green Mountain was on at the start of the meeting.
I'm still here.
He's down at the bottom.
It wasn't showing up, David, sorry.
Okay.
I think there's more than just those people here. Okay, we got you up, Dave, your turn.
Okay, so I ran some, I put that little report together, I don't know if there are any of you have to see it, you, you have it there, Chad, or do you want me to go, Andrew?
It should be on your screen.
Okay. I'm still seeing this, I'm still seeing on the agenda.
You're still seeing it.
That's okay, I've got, I've got a copy in front of me here.
Well, hold on one second, we wanna get it so other people can see it.
Sure.
It's on this screen.
Can you see it now?
Oh, but I, I have a copy in front of me, do you want me just to read over this real quick?
Hold on a second. Do you have to go over to the right and hit share, up on top of the, over to the bottom right?
Yeah, you gotta, after you pick it.
There we go.
Okay.
I can see, yeah, I can see some of it, but I've got it, I've got a copy right here, so. Just summarizing, we opened, we opened the last Friday in April, we opened with nine holes, and we kept that for the first week, we ran a reduced rate, we saw some good, some good business, even though it was still a little wet, but in general, the course condition has been excellent. We opened, we opened eighteen hole, that's it after a week. We did increase our alley rates from last year, on average, I put in about three dollars per flower or pattern to maximize the quality of the golf course. June's rates, this was in May, and June's rate decreased as well. What, what we did do this year is change our peak pricing. Previously, we had pricing based on months, May, June, July, or July, August, September, or peak, in a, to summarize, we increased our peak pricing by four weeks, and now we're charging that peak pricing for a longer period of time. So it starts in June, and then carries along through the second week, and then October.
So Da, David?
It's not a full.
David? David, so, it's Jim, when I look at, by the numbers, and I go to revenue, April two thousand and twenty-one, it tells me thirty thousand, two hundred and eight dollars, and then the next one tells me round sixteen?
Yes.
So we charge the eighteen hundred and eighty-eight dollars a round?
No, no, that would have been, the reason that number is up is we get a lot of passholders paying their membership.
What's that?
Passholders.
That's, most of that is passholder revenue.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's the big, that's, that's all in fact, so that's everything.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's what you're, that's what you're looking at there.
Okay.
When we open the books, you know, in April, that's, that's, that's exactly what that is.
Okay, keep going.
Yeah, so we increased the car fees a little bit by a couple bucks, passholders' car fees remain the same, giving them a little benefit. Season, the passholder prices did increase by five, six percent, and we did see an increase in our thirty and underpass. What's interesting is we're, we're grabbing a lot of folks from the Killington market, and we actually have people that work at Killington that could play golf for free there, that have purchased that thirty and underpass. That's good for us looking forward, because if those folks stay around in the area, I look at that as, as, you know, sort of seeding our passholder membership for the future. They, you know, they enjoy the golf courts, they enjoy the facility, so there's chances are that once they are over the age of thirty, they will, they will get a pass with us, which is, which is what we want. Passholder numbers, when I made this document, was at one eighteen, we've now, we're probably closer to one thirty right now, totaled in all categories, which is above what we did last year. So in all the start of the season, I think has been, has been right on track, and we're sitting in a good place right now in terms of what we did and, and where we are. Those, those numbers there, the key with that is rounds are down, explanation, I, the main explanation for me is kids are back in school, and, and some folks have to go back to the office or wherever they work, they're not able to work at home. Last year, we had a lot of people in the area that had their kids with them, they were homeschooled, that's not the case this year, so, but our, our strategy we put in place, I think, has been able to maintain and increase revenue, which is where we really wanna be, and, and because of that, I think, you know, looking forward, I, I, I would expect in July, our round numbers to be more in line of where they were last year, once the kids are out of school, people start to travel again, and, and come up and experience the Killington area, which will be great.
So the one thing I do notice, like, in both April and May, is our labor costs are down, is that because you have not been able to get people, or because we just have been able to be more efficient and didn't start as many people as early?
No, that's correct, we haven't, we're still down, the grounds crew is down probably around fifty percent of where they wanna be, they're currently with, with our golf superintendent, mechanic, they've been operating with four employees, in a perfect world, we'd like at least another three or maybe four, getting that number up to eight, but that's where the, the majority of our revenue is gone. Golf course operations is also down a little bit, but nowhere near, we're probably, we're probably short one or half, you know, half a person a week type of thing, it's not, it's not critical.
So are the groundskeepers that are working, they're salaried, they're putting out?
The, 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 two out of the four are, so you have, you have, I don't think, there's no numbers here, Robert is a salaried employee, and Joan and the mechanic is also a salaried employee, and then the others, anyone else that is brought on is paid at an hourly basis.
And are they putting in a lot of overtime?
There's a, there's a little bit of overtime right now, it would be understood, seeing they're running so short staff, but I, I'm looking at the numbers, between ten and fifteen hours of pay period, and that's a two-week pay period, so it's not extravagant.
Okay.
And it helped that the course came through the winter really well, so they didn't need to hit it as hard early in the season.
No, I was just, if they were putting in a lot of overtime, that would be something.
And what efforts are you, what, what efforts are you doing to try to obtain more staff?
Well, currently, we still have our, you know, the Brown Golf folks who are, well, the corporate is still, we run that Indeed ad, we have gone back to basics a little bit, we've put a sign out, Steve, I don't know whether you noticed it or not.
Oh, yeah, it's right on, right at the end of the road, I've seen.
Right on one hundred, it's, you know, a primitive attempt to get folks, but sometimes those simple measures work the best, so we'll see what happens. It looks like we've got, we've got two folks that have agreed to start this week or the next, which will make a big difference. We've had people come in and start and say they wanna work, and then they don't complete the paperwork, and they, they just disappear, and they just go away, so they're all, and I don't know why that is, but.
It was actual work.
Oh, I have to comment, I can't work remotely?
They completed their work for unemployment, they applied something.
Exactly.
That was part of it.
So that's, that's promising, if we can get two, as we get into, you know, AJGAs next week, so we're, we're gonna see an influx there, but the, the golf course is in good shape, we don't have to do anything out of the ordinary to present, I think, a tournament-ready golf course, so that's not, other than, other than extra, you know, cutting the greens and rolling the greens and things like that, that workload week won't be, won't be terrible for the staff, because the golf courts, I think, is in, is in good enough shape now, and then once we roll the greens and lower the mower height a little bit, the course will be good to go.
On the AJGA, is it a half or a full?
It's a full field, Jim, yeah, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-two players, and that'll bring in a bunch more folks into the area as well.
Right.
Yeah, the weekend will be jammed, right before the start, in a good way.
I did, I did provide another set of documents there, this comes from GolfBack, which is our online digital platform, the four main areas, I'm just gonna go over the main areas here, there's a, there's reports and numbers on our, that's it, on our booking engine. I'm not gonna speak specifically to the numbers, because quite frankly, I'm not an expert on it. I did speak with Bryce, who is an expert on it, at Brown Golf, and what I'm gonna get him to do, the, the value in the, and the, the value in these numbers is, I believe, the trends and the charts, is looking at it comparatively over a period of time, and looking at where we can improve our digital presence. So, you know, we have the, the booking engine numbers there, you know, I can say all thirty-five thousand dollars of booked revenue through the website is great, but I don't really know, because I've got nothing to compare it to. And then we also have website stats, marketing data-based stats, and, and internet search engine summary as well, so all those numbers will, will start to make a little bit more sense, but we can do a month-to-month comparison, and my plan is, and I've spoken with Bryce, and this is what he does, is to probably put together a recorded presentation at, at the end of the, at the end of the month, we can present to the select board and, and go over the main points, and if there is something that needs to be addressed, we can certainly, we can certainly address that.
Is this just booking through GolfBack, or?
Correct, yeah, that's our, that's our booking engine, and we've got away from all those third parties, and it's, it's working in our favor, we, we're, we're getting, you know, every, every dollar that comes in through our green fee and through our booking engine is now ours, you know, it belongs to the town, whereas previously with a lot of those third-party booking engines, there were, there were trade deals and, and a lot of revenue was, was getting missed, that's not the case anymore, so, you know, we own the booking engine at our engine, we pay a monthly fee for it, we know what the cost is, and, and the revenue flows directly to the town.
Yeah, I see rounds booked, six forty-nine, and then I.
That's, that, yeah, that's rounds booked just through the online.
Through that, but then on the top right-hand corner, I see only one, promo codes used is only one, so I think that's what you.
Promo codes is something that, yeah, early season, when the price is down already, I'm not a fan of promoting shoulder season pricing.
Right.
You'll see that increase as we get into peak season, and that's a tool that we can use, so we can offer promo codes for folks to play, say, Monday through Thursday.
Right.
When, you know, when, when the T-sheets are, you know, half occupancy or, or, or it's low, or something like that, so that's, that's a key number to look at, in July or in June, you know, once we hit peak pricing, and certainly in July, are we throwing in more, you know, promo codes, I still need.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks.
So, on the treasures report, right now, the balance in the pro shop is three hundred and twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand dollars in the restaurant, which is approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we have not yet taken any of the money out of our line of credit, the hundred thousand dollars that we did last year, so right now, it does not appear that we will need it at all, because June is, should be a, a break-even or positive month, and I don't see us having the need to go into, into that debt.
And they were very unhappy with the price for the awning, so I think they're not gonna do it, so, came in at fifty thousand dollars to do the awning on the debt, almost triple what it was before COVID.
Yeah, that was crazy.
Yeah.
I wanted seven thousand dollars to pay. Yeah, that was crazy. They wanted seven thousand dollars to pay the steel.
Really?
Yeah, that was, so the low, low price was raw steel, and then the painted price was seven thousand dollars.
Who was that price from?
That was from Otter Creek awnings.
But it's how much it was jacked up from the first time they looked at it, is what really-
I, I had much better pricing from Green Mountain awnings. I priced both ways between Otter Creek and Green Mountain when I put that one up in front of Jack's for COVID.
So it's a Green Mountain awning?
Yeah, the guy's name-
Green Mountain?
The guy's name is Bob Perrow. Very good, does nice work.
Oh.
Yeah.
Perrow, yep.
Wouldn't hurt to ask him if-
I can get you his number, if you need it.
Thank you.
Yep.
That'd be great.
Okay. We're good.
There, all in all, if you want to go, some good golf next week coming up, and I worked the juniors play. It'll be, it'll be a special case for sure.
Steve will be out there.
I'm sure he will.
I'm there every day. It's very, it's very disheartening to watch him.
You mean a fourteen-year-old girl, get a two-hundred-and-fifty yards?
When they walk up the ninth hole, and the girl is so small, you can't see her behind the cart she's pushing, and she's a wedge away from the green on a four-hundred-yard hole. It's pretty, but they, they are great to watch, and they're great kids, they're very well behaved. And the people that run the program, I won't, I won't say they're strict on them, but they make them toe the line. They don't put up with swearing, they don't put up with throwing clubs, they don't put up with any of that kind of attitude.
Oh, no, there's none of that.
No, you don't see it.
So when we approved the Treasurers' report, we approved both at that time.
Okay, I was, I was gonna ask if you, if you did it, compared the whole thing.
Yeah, I looked at the whole.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you, David. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good evening, everybody.
You could, you think you could build the account up to a million bucks next year?
I'll draw my hat.
Thanks.
We get the crossing up there.
That's the right answer.
Oh, when you, when you look at it, when you look at it in the net, and you look at the town is owed, and the restricted funds, it, where we're technically, today, cash-wise, sixty-seven thousand dollars from being break-even from its total debts, you know what I mean? So, I mean, we're, we're in an okay place, you know?
And I mean, like, even when David was talking about, like, COVID last year and everything, and the amount of people that were in town, I mean, it is funny, because if you just take a look at this comparative budget, and you look at that, you know, the solid waste or whatever, you know, the, for solid waste, thirty thousand dollars as of period eleven for this year, compared to thirty-seven thousand last year. I mean, so that means there are less-
There are fewer people.
That, that, that are here, so. But I mean, at least that are, that, that, not fewer people that are here, but fewer people that took full residency here during that time.
I mean, you're looking at two hundred and fifty rounds less for the month of May, and the revenue's up eight thousand.
Right.
You know, overall. So, I mean, that's, that's-
Yeah.
With the, the pricing things that they did, and, and how people are doing it in that.
Yeah, around, around, revenue per round for last, I got these down, for last May was seventy-eight, that's, was seventy-eight dollars per round, and this year is ninety-six.
Yeah.
And that's a significant difference, and it's trending the same in June as well.
Yeah.
First ten months in June, our, our revenue per round is up twenty bucks.
That's that algorithm thing that they're doing, where it checks the prices up, so. All right, thank you, David.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Do we have driveway permits?
Two driveway permits. One for Eric Steele, it's on Winding Way, it's up near the, the top. I mean, not that it matters, but it's lot, it's map oh-seven, lot seventy-seven.
Off East Mountain Road?
No, this is on Winding Way, is off of Rustic, next to Rustic Drive, and off of Double Day Hill.
Oh, up in there.
So when you get up, and it turns right around to the left, is where this driveway is, and they go up to the area where it's flat, and they have an easy access.
So you and Ricky have both been out or whatever, or you've been out?
I was out there.
Um, what are the two arrows?
Those are on the map, so.
Yeah, those are, that's just dimensions.
Yeah, there's little segments.
He's only getting one cut, right?
Right, he's getting one, one cut there, they have it sketched on there.
Make a motion for the town manager to move forward, the driveway permit on, tax map seven, there's seventy-seven, Winding Way.
Yeah, you guys all sign those.
No, all three of them.
Make a motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I have another driveway permit for Tony Kers.
You two said, no, I don't want to sign it.
Timber, Timberline, Timber, Timberline Drive, this is up at the end of, of Timberline Drive, it's an access, it's got a small corner point with driveway easements, and it's a very straightforward-
I'll make a motion to let the town manager move forward, that one there, so I don't have to sign it until it gets to me.
What, do you want to look at and ask questions before you-
You know, this is one of those things where he goes out and-
I know.
You know?
All in favor of the second motion, please say aye.
This one's a little more technical, huh?
Yeah.
Aye.
So, and other things, the, we're still waiting for our mower to come in, our roadside mower, it's supposed to be in any time now. Hopefully, it'll be in the next couple of weeks. And also, due to some breakdown with the, the one sweeper, and a lot of the washouts we've had with some of the storms, we are still a little behind with road sweeping, and we're getting some complaints, but we are still at it, and we keep plugging away at it in between other processes. Barrows Town Road is ready for paving, could be paving any day now.
Is the company ready? I know the road's ready.
Well, the company's supposed, they had said, if they, if they had the weather, they thought they could get it done this week, which would be before the AJGA. If not, they have to wait till after, but the goal right now is to get it done sometime this week, and we'll paving is doing that. So I'm optimistic that we will have that, that project done by then.
Striping of the road, do we do it there?
Excuse me?
The striping, do we stripe?
No, we don't, we have never striped that before. I think we should in the future, because even if you just put the yellow line down the middle, it keeps people, it feels like you have a little bit of separation.
So Chris had mentioned in the past, like, maybe we should start, saying, when we put these things out for bid for paving, I think you said- Get it in the, the day hap-
Well, we do that, when we do the main road ones, we didn't, I didn't do it for that one, because it was never striped before, but when we do, like, Killington Road, I always have the striping in there. The issue becomes, I can get a set of striping that's whatever length we do, and then the other length doesn't have any, you know, so, but we do typically try to include that in the paving projects, because they have more access to the line strippers than we do.
Right.
Yep.
Can we ask them if they can get somebody in there?
Well, I have done that, I have gone to the pavers and said, hey, when you're coming in, and, and we're not doing, we're doing a section of East Mountain Road in August, and I'm gonna have them to stripe, and if I can get them here, I'm gonna have them do the striping of the whole thing, if, if I don't have the other one done by then.
Schoolhouse Road, can you get that one?
That would have to be included, yes.
Because when they did the triangle at four and a hundred, they, the pavers were sitting there waiting, not the pavers, the strippers-
Yeah.
Were waiting for them to get done paving.
Yeah.
They were there that fast.
So, we're working on that.
Okay. And that's all I have for today.
For the people tuned in, is there anything you wanted to bring up that we have not covered? Could you let us know? Wit has unmuted himself.
No, I'm also, I was just gonna say bye to everyone.
Bye.
Aren't you leaving on vacation?
That'd be nice. I'm gonna get to Maine for a few days, that's the goal.
Let's talk for a minute. Huh? No, okay. No, it's because his wife's not here to do my yoga class.
Oh.
Yes.
His wife's on vacation, his wife's on vacation, he's not.
Exactly.
Let's not go there.
All right, that was the only one that undid it, so do we have other business, or executive sessions?
I was gonna say executive session for personnel.
Yeah. And I'm gonna add legal to that.
Okay.
And, um-
Under other business, you guys have the two minutes that we did not approve, because Chris wasn't here.
So, Chris, the draft minutes?
Yep.
Um, we approved the May twenty-fifth, but I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of, right now, June second?
June one.
June one?
Yep, and June second.
And June second. And they were both executive sessions, like, so.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Under other business, before we go into executive session, just wanted to mention that my plan right now is, because tomorrow is the end of the appeal period for the, to the BCA for, for valuations, so I am looking at a week from Friday, the twenty-fourth, as to having a, a brief select board meeting to set the tax rate, if that works for everybody. I think that's, we would know by then.
That could just be a call, and if you guys can, because really, it's, 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 it's a quick formula, it's what we said-
Right.
Divided by what the grand list is.
Yeah, basically, once he lodges the grand list, which he won't do till later this week, so, and-
We don't get to add any-
No, no expenses, this is just, this is just-
No, we don't get to add any sense to it.
Right.
It's a formula.
Yeah, so we can, we can do that pretty quick.
Do it.
So we just want to make sure we do that. I'm away the following week for that week. Normally, we usually miss a select board meeting around the Fourth of July, instead, it'll be a week earlier this year, and the next regular meeting will be on the eleventh. And I am away this Thursday, Friday, and Monday for a wedding. So, that's all I have.
Are all the plans made? Everything ready to go?
It's supposed to be ready to go. My son is getting married this weekend.
Excellent. Very good.
Good.
And that's all I- I think we could hear you typing, Wes.
Or- Yeah, shut himself off, and then turned himself back on.
Motion go into executive session at seven thirty-four for legal and personnel.
Hey, guys, sorry, can I ask you just one question?
Sure.
Sure.
Just Katie Reed, I just wanted to see if we would be addressing the school board vacancy during this meeting today.
And you have that?
I did not put that on the agenda for today. I apologize, Katie, that, that is my, my error, and we can do that on the twenty-fourth, next Friday.
The twenty-fourth, you got it.
Does that work?
Yeah. So Katie, are you the one that put your name in?
I am.
Okay, so this is Jim Half, I'm the other board member on there?
Yes, Jim, many times.
Yes. So, just so, a little heads up for you, the board does not meet in July or August anyway, or, or, or at least, they don't meet again. We've had our last meeting, I believe, in June, and so they do not meet in July. So if we have-
You want to do it on July eleventh, then the regular meeting?
No, we could do it on, let's make sure, because we have to get it to them-
Right.
To say, so that way, it's all set up. And then once we make the motion and do it, you need to come into La Creche and swear in, so you can vote when you go to that first meeting. All right? I'm sorry about that.
I apologize again, Katie, I had you on my list and in the folder, and I just missed it.
I was trying to push it out, because I wanted you to take over my spot next March, so. Anybody else out there wants school board? Thank you.
Don't hear anybody.
Motion to go in executive session at seven thirty-five then.
Okay.